All right. Matt, you ready?
I'm ready.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a write-up?
It was on your computer.
Or do I have a... Oh, here it is. Okay. So, 5:30. So, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Nitrana County Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 5:30 PM on, what are we at, March 9th, 2021. My name's Hal Hutchinson. I'm the chairman. To my left is Commission Member Matt Mitchell, and to my right, immediate right, is Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chairman Jason Gutierrez. Right in front of me is the county planner, Trish Chavis, and the lady over here under the screen is Charmaine Reed. She's the deputy county attorney. So, this commission is an advisory board of the Nitrana County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded, and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have the opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor of the application may address the commission, and I think we have just one item on the agenda for tonight, as far as a public hearing. Secondly, those opposed to the application may address the commission. Finally, the applicant may give a brief rebuttal. When the chair recognizes you, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address before giving your comments. And I don't think we'll need this, but I'll go through it anyway. This is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission, and if a person's conduct is out of order, the chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues the conduct, or if the conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave immediately. So, hopefully, we're not going to get into any of that. So, first thing on the agenda after all that is pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of the February 9th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I would motion to approve the minutes from February 9th, 2021.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes. Next on the agenda is our sole item on the agenda as far as public hearings, and that is consideration of final plat of seven lots to be known as Mountain Acres. That's PS 20-1. Now, Trish, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is an application by Camille Lehman. The proposed subdivision is located on Casper Mountain between Archery Range and K-2 Road. The subject parcel and all surrounding parcels are zoned Mountain Residential 2. Here is a map of the subdivision parcel, and on the right, you can see where K-2 Road heads south from Hogodon Road, and then on the left is Archery Range Road, which comes down off of Micro Road. And this is the subdivision where I laid out the digital data of it, so you can actually see the lot lines on the aerial. This is a site photo looking west. There's kind of a two-track road that heads through that property, and that's where I was standing on the K-2 roadside. This is looking northeast. So, criteria for approval: Is the subdivision consistent with the development plan? The proposed subdivision is under the guidance of the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. The density for residential development is 1 unit per 5 acres in the Mountain Residential 2 district. Staff's proposed finding of fact: The proposed subdivision does comply with the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. These lots will be low-density residential with 1 unit per 5 acres, and you can see each of those lots does meet that minimum lot size of 5 acres, so it's within the zoning district minimum lot size. Is the subdivision in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards? The proposed finding of fact: The subdivision has been processed in accordance with the applicable general provisions and subdivision design standards of the 2013 Nitrana County subdivision regulations. Has the applicant provided evidence that a sufficient water supply system and sewer disposal system will comply with state and local laws and regulations? Staff's proposed finding of fact: The WDEQ has provided a non-adverse recommendation for the subdivision, noting that due to the restrictions of the bedrock, lot owners will need to contact a Wyoming licensed professional engineer to design the septic system serving any homes constructed in the subdivision. There's three wells within the subdivision, and they meet the DEQ Class 1 and 2 standards for groundwater, so DEQ has approved this water study. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county? Proposed finding of fact: The proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, as the uses will be low-density residential and compatible with the surrounding area. Public comment: As of tonight's meeting, one comment was received with questions about water and the blocking of roads that have been in use since 1950s. Notifications were sent to property owners within a quarter mile. It's approximately 27 property owners. And so, just briefly touching on the blocking of the roads, there is, through some research that we've done, a county road that runs from... Let me go back here. Goes from Hogodon Road and heads south, and then turns west. So, where Hogodon Road comes down is K-2 Road. It heads west and goes through the property to Archery Range Road, and then it further heads west, and it's known as the Old Jackson Canyon Road. Through discussions with landowners in that area, the county will be proceeding with vacation west of K-2 Road, and so the applicant has, in his plat, added his own access through that subdivision that excludes this portion of county road. So, and with that, staff would recommend that Planning Commission recommend approval of this by the Board of County Commissioners, and include all the findings of fact that were presented in the staff report and tonight's meeting.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would have one, or several. Trish, currently in our subdivision regulations, we have conversations regarding improvement and service districts, and, you know, for the maintenance of the roads, the internal private roads. There has been some talk about rewriting those regulations, but that hasn't gone forward. What's the position of requirement of having an ISD for this subdivision?
We have been speaking with the applicant. We are not going to require the improvement and service district. The applicant will be forming an HOA that will maintain their own roads within that subdivision.
On the sewer side of things, it's noticed that there is shallow bedrock, and so they'll have to have a PE-designed, professional engineer-designed sewer system with each lot. So, what steps have been done to memorialize that? Is that a note on the plat, or is there going to be like a letter recorded with the plat, or what?
We have not added it to the plat, but we can. We can add that as a note on the plat.
Historically, we had done that before as kind of a buyer beware. So, if the buyer come along to buy a lot, that was one more mechanism that you would have to see a professional engineer for your sewer system.
Jason, if I could jump in on that one. That was a little confusing to me on the letter from DEQ, which was June 5th last year. It says the consultant has recommended that these notes be required to be added to the final plats. I thought that was a little strange, that DEQ was speaking for the consultant. But it's basically saying the same thing Jason did, is that wording is suggested, I guess, on the plat, and you're still working through that today? I'm sorry, I guess I was thinking about my question and not listening to your answer.
No, we can add that if you make it in part of your recommendation as a condition to add it to the plat.
Okay.
And lastly, I guess I'd like to speak a little bit more about this Jackson Canyon Road conversation. You've indicated the county would maybe initiate a vacation process at some later date. The issue I would have is we don't know the result of that yet, and it would seem to me we ought to go through the vacation process before we consider a subdivision. With the off-chance that the vacation doesn't, the road isn't vacated, perhaps somebody comes along and does have an argument that that road is in fact a road, and now we have a plat on top of this road, and we create a conflict there, and in the meantime, maybe they've sold one of those lots, and then that person that's bought that lot has the conflict of this Jackson Canyon Road underneath there. So, if I'm understanding you right, the idea was later on to a vacation?
That is correct. Through discussions with the legal department and conversations with the applicant, the subdivision meets all the criteria with or without the county road. The applicant is aware that if, for some reason, the road is not vacated, that an amendment to this plat will be required.
How would we amend a plat later on after we've already approved it?
You go through the same process and just do an amended final plat.
Thank you for your response.
Matt, any questions?
Can you just, like, take a pointer and just show where the roads are on there? Because I have a hard time visualizing what's going on, and just kind of go through it step by step, because I'm just wondering about the act. Again, I think what Commissioner Gutierrez was saying is about access and how this reflects. I'm not as, you know, well-versed on this as the rest of the...
So, I'll come up here. So, K-2 Road comes down through here and continues going south. The applicant has crossed their access from this corner right here, and it comes up through the subdivision here. This portion of the road is what's in question right here. And so, this is the portion heading west off of this road that the board would seek to vacate.
Ask another question.
Sorry, once again, we couldn't see.
Oh, sorry.
Where the Jackson Canyon Road is?
So, we're discussing west of K-2 Road, this direction.
And when you say vacate, how does that affect, like, when you say the county's going to vacate that road, or what does that exactly mean? Use the term...
I'll refer to Charmaine.
Okay.
So, since it's a county road, if the commissioners wanted to, they could pass a resolution vacating the road, and then that would be filed. It's my understanding that whether the road's vacated or not, the subdivision meets the requirements of the subdivision resolution. So, whether they vacated it or not, it would still meet requirements.
So, if they vacated it, that mean it'd be no longer be a county road? Is that what you're saying by the term vacating?
Yeah, so right now, there's a road easement.
Right.
And if they vacated it, it would no longer exist. The easement would go away.
So, and you're talking about the easement on the east side of that property? Because there's, on this map, there's like a 50-foot easement that goes along the property. Is that what you're talking about?
No, the 50-foot easement that you're referring to, I think, is on the plat, and that is his proposed new road.
Okay. So, right now, there's a county road that goes through there.
Yes.
And so, and I guess, how does that benefit? Like, if they vacate it, does that mean that then the landowners can just take it over and do whatever they want with it? Is that the advantage of vacating it to the property owners?
That is correct, and he is the landowner. So, you know, when working with the applicant, we had proposed to him that this county road that runs through the property, do you want to utilize that within your subdivision? And the applicant wants to maintain his own roads in the summer and in the winter, and that doesn't meet the criteria of a county road, and there was no way to utilize that road the way it runs, and one of the options that we had discussed was just vacating it. And so, that would give him that property back without the easement through it.
Because what I was looking at is somebody bought a property up on the, like I said, on the northern part of, or the, yeah, the northern part of that. If they bought it early, would there be road access to that? Because it seems like you would be dependent on a private road being built to access that property. So, the plan is that he would then build a private road along there to provide access to all those properties, and so that KW, whatever road, would then feed in. So, he would either use that road, or if they vacated that road, then he would use offshoots off that to then provide access. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, so he's going to take access from K-2 Road. Let me go back here. He's going to take access from K-2 Road where it comes down into that triangle portion, and then you'll see on the plat, which, let me go back here, on this plat, and this is where I've overlaid the plat on top of the aerial. So, you'll come in on that southeast corner, and then you can see the green line that runs on the eastern boundary. That is where he's going to construct a brand-new road.
Brand-new road, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So, one other question. So, I was, when I was looking through here, it seemed like, and maybe I just didn't read it correctly, that it was, it said, "Since Nitrana County has been delegated by the WDEC to issue small waste system permits, is the county responsible to assure prior to issuing the permits?" But then, it kind of says in the, I guess, subpart D, that application materials have been submitted for review. So, is it the county, then, that will, that is going to ultimately approve the sewage system? So, the DEQ has just kind of delegated that to the county, then?
That's correct, yes. And so, the Casper-Nitrana County Health Department will be in charge of all of the permitting and inspections of any wastewater systems.
And just one thing back to the previous one. So, from your standpoint, the planned development, or at least of that road, meets the county requirements for that?
Correct.
Jason, you... I'm sorry, Matt.
Yeah, I think I understand now.
As a follow-up with that, Jackson Canyon Road going through the plat, through these lots, are they opposed to showing Jackson Canyon Road on the plat right now as it exists? And if they go through the vacation process, then that could be amended at some future point, but at least right now, if we went through it with the plat, it would show Jackson Canyon Road through the plat?
I would probably refer to the applicant's representative on that question.
My concern was just not to lose track of Jackson Canyon Road, the validity of it right now, and, you know, if some future time we go through a vacation process and it's successfully vacated, then that's a different conversation.
Are you finished?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of questions. The staff report needs something to... So, this has been, I was looking at some of these dates here, one of them a year old. Maybe it's from State Engineer's Office. Yeah, March 2nd, 2020. And there was reference made in the staff report. Planning staff, again, researching road rights of way and deeds pertaining to K-2. Staff did locate several documents that are currently being reviewed by different county departments. The department is continuing to process this subdivision while discussions are taking place, because the subdivision does have access and should not be further delayed. So, it looks like this has been in the mill for a while, and just, can you kind of walk us through why it's been a year?
So, this is partially due to, the applicant had the property surveyed and had been working with DEQ prior to even coming to the county for an application. The county was the last person to be involved in the subdivision, so that's why the DEQ letters are dated, I think, maybe even two years or a year and a half. And so, we actually just received the application, I think it was in June or July of 2020. Once we started working on the subdivision, that's when that discussion of the Jackson Canyon Road came up, so we kind of paused on the subdivision until we could work further into how to proceed. And so, recently, we just decided that going through the application of the subdivision, that it meets the criteria, and so there is no reason to hold it up anymore.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say that, and I'm hearing legal say that as well, so. Another question, and I read one of the objection, or the objection, I guess, to the deal, and it had something to do with water, and so it says there's three wells on the property now, and then we're going to have seven lots. Where are the wells?
Ah, that I do not know. That was not in the study that I received. I'm not sure if the applicant...
I was wondering if they're on a particular one lot, or is it well water to share, or is that, I didn't know how that all fit together.
I do not have an answer to that, and I apologize.
Okay. And I guess the last question kind of piggybacks on Jason, and that has to do with improvement and service district. So, assuming this developer sells all seven lots, and he doesn't retain one of the lots for himself, and you got this road here, and people are going down it all the time, who is the guy that everybody goes to to say, hey, this road is in terrible condition, I need to have it bladed or whatever? How does that happen? How does that work?
It will be part of his documents that he records with his HOA, I'm assuming, and again, I would refer to the applicant's representative on covenants and the different documents that will support that. And I'd also like to note that the applicant does live up there, and so he's going to be a part of the subdivision, and so it's his full intent to maintain that road and, you know, use it through the HOA.
In perpetuity? So, if he dies, if he moves, if he, whatever moves on, who's going to take care of it?
That I don't know.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No questions.
So, I should mention that, so this is the only item having to do with a public hearing, but items on this agenda are subject to a second public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners for final action. Recommendations by the Planning Commission on items from tonight, this agenda may be considered, may be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at its meeting on April 6, 2021, at 5:30 PM here in this room. So, it depends on how, what we come up with here later. So, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing for consideration of PS 20-1, and that's approval of final plat of seven lots to be known as Mountain Acres. All in, or anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward, state your name and address, and we'd like to hear from you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and staff. My name's Heather Duncan Malone. I am the representative for Mr. Lehman this evening. My address is 139 West Second Street, Suite 1C, and I'm sorry, Mr. Lehman couldn't be here. He's out of the country, so he asked me to be here in his place, and I'll try to answer some of the questions that have come up as best I can. First of all, I don't know that I can add too much to Trish's presentation. I think she did a nice job of detailing what's gone on. I'd like to say that, you know, he does intend to form an HOA, or if it is the county's preference, I don't think he would be opposed to an improvement and service district, you know, whatever mechanism that he needs to maintain the roads and be in compliance with the county regulations. As far as the road goes, I also do not believe that he would probably be opposed to showing Jackson Canyon Road on the plat in the event that the vacation that we would like to see happen does not go forward. We do intend to either petition to do that, or see if the county commissioners would be willing to do that, because that portion of the road, the way that it is now as a county road, it doesn't make a lot of sense with the way his subdivision is planned. So, that would be the reason why we would ask for the vacation, but we can certainly have that on the plat in the event that that doesn't go forward. I don't think he would be opposed to indicating on there that a professional engineer needs to design the septic system. That note, I think, would be no problem at all. And I just would ask that you recommend approval for the proposed subdivision. It's been a long time, a long process for Mr. Lehman, and part of the reason why we're not waiting for the vacation is because of the investment that he's put into it. He's spent a lot of money on this. He does have some buyers lined up for lots, if it goes any longer, and vacating a road can take quite a while. You know, he's worried that those buyers are going to find somebody else to buy from, and that'll set him back. So, it's really about his investment. That's why we're wanting to see this go forward at this time. And he's working with the county, and will continue to work with the county to do whatever he needs to do to get this approved, and if you have any questions for me, I'll do my best to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms... Thank you, Heather Duncan Malone. So, are there any questions for the applicant?
No, she took great notes and answered my concerns. Thank you.
I just have one question. This just relates to, so how does, if it's an improvement service district versus a homeowners', how does that affect, like, what goes on?
So, an ISD is a governmental entity, basically, and it would require more paperwork and approval from the state. So, I think the HOA is just a, you know, more efficient way, in his opinion, to handle this, and I think that whoever the association is comprised of, whether he's around or not in the future, they'll, this association will live on through the landowners of the subdivision.
So, if it was an improvement service district, didn't the county or somebody would take responsibility for the road, or what does that really mean?
No, but, you know, the ISD has to submit a budget to the commissioners, and they have to assess, you know, there has to be an assessment role for the landowners there. There's just a lot more bookkeeping, I guess, that would be involved.
But that would take care of the road, then, if they did that?
It did.
So, somebody have to pay you, like, they might levy a cost for the homeowners or something like that?
Yes, sir, I believe that's right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could chime onto that for Mr. Mitchell. An improvement service district, when they agree upon, they essentially agree that they're going to tax themselves on a said dollar amount. So, for instance, they might decide to charge each other $100, and then when they get their property tax notice, that $100 is actually shown on their property tax notice. The assessor assesses that, and then the treasurer collects that $100, so that $700 a year, then, is then distributed through the treasurer back to the improvement. back to the Improvement Service District among their elected... They're going to have like a president, treasurer, such. Where an HOA is just a civil agreement between neighbors and they... Thanks, Joe, for blading the road. Here's 20 bucks for diesel.
Ms. Duncan Malone, I do have a couple of questions. What... Do you know anything about the status of these three wells that are on the property?
I'm afraid I do not. I don't know where they're located. I do know that the results from the wells indicated that they might have good luck building additional wells there. But I'm afraid I don't know a lot about those.
Okay. So one of the other things that we read in the... There was an objection in the paperwork, said something about snowmobiles and trails and stuff like that. I assume that's on Jackson Canyon Road. So if that's... I guess I would assume that farther on down Jackson Canyon Road is a roadblock or something where you can't get through there and the road therefore would qualify for being abandoned. But I'm also to assume, or can I safely assume that there's no one on the west side of that... of the subdivision here that is going to be left without access by this abandonment?
That would be...
Proposed abandonment?
That would be correct. The parcel that's directly west of the subject parcel is owned by the BLM. Any... Once you leave Jackson Canyon Road, or, excuse me, once you go west of Archery Range Road, which is the dirt road, right, that you can see clearly, the Jackson Canyon Road does not line up with any of the roads that exist. So it veers off and Micro Road does not follow what's been described in the descriptions of that Jackson Canyon Road.
So sorry to... Could you show us again what road you're talking about? I see the one that's generally north and south. Is that the...
The clear dirt road that's north and south is the Archery Range Road.
Can you point that out, please? So... Unless, Mr. Chairman.
So this is Archery Range Road right here. The road that we're discussing vacating is west. So it heads from here and kind of cuts through and comes back up.
Okay. So just west of the subdivision, it merges with... What road was that, did you say?
Archery Range Road.
Archery Range Road, okay. And that's BLM and their... Okay.
And the vacation process isn't a standalone process where the commissioners just vacate a road. There's four weeks of notifications in the paper and legal notices. It's a long public process to do it. So there's going to be opportunity from landowners up there that may or may not be opposed to come forward and speak.
I think they also have to have a viewing. Don't you have to appoint viewers?
That is currently up in legal being discussed.
Not this part of legal, so. However, back to your question, excuse me, about putting the road on the plat, regardless of whether it's going to be vacated. So my response was, as long as the road... As long as all the lots are usable, whether the road's vacated or not, that's fine. But the road does need to be on the plat. I was flipping through here and in Appendix K, since it's there, it does need to... Since it exists, it needs to be on the plat. And then, like Mr. Kitar said, if it is vacated, the plat could be amended.
Yeah, I would imagine if somebody bought that lot and went out there the next day and started building a house, that all kind of flags would go up.
Are wells listed on that list that need to be shown on the plat?
I will glance while you guys...
So any other questions for Ms. Duncan Malone? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just ask one question on that. So... Because I guess there was a... Of hauling water, I assume they just bring water in. Does that... Do like all the properties up there have their own wells? Or do some, they haul water in and...
So currently, I don't know that... I don't know which lots are occupied or not. There are the three wells that are up there. I don't know to what degree they're being used. I suppose, depending upon what the results are of test wells, some of the lots may have to have water hauled in.
I was just talking about other property up there.
Oh, other property. I'm assuming that there are some that do that.
That haul water in?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know for certain, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Pete Condes, 2990 Whitcomb Road, Casper. So as far as the well thing goes, we got permits for seven wells. We got three of them drilled. And then when the subdivision kind of drug out where it didn't get approved, we quit drilling. So there's actually four wells. One of them's an old well, but four of those lots already have wells on them. As far as the... Somebody was saying something about groomed snowmobile trails? Or there are no groomed trails on Jackson Canyon Road. The trail system doesn't go through there, so it's not groomed by the state. There is a snowmobile trail that is... that does go across, but it's to a lot to the south that's not on this property. The other thing about that Jackson Canyon Road is it's not maintained by the county. It's more of a Jeep trail. It's pretty rough. And it only goes through this property. As soon as it gets on the west side, it... That... If you look on a map, that road goes all the way to the west end of the mountain. But as soon as it hits that BLM on the west side, it goes into the Girl Scout camp. And it's not a road. It's nothing that anybody's used in a long time. So it goes right through the middle of their camp. So they have access from Micro Road. And then that road, I think, continues, but it's on private property the whole way.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Cordis?
I'm good.
So I do have a question. So am I to understand, then, that you were in the process of drilling seven wells and you drilled four, three of them are producing?
Yeah.
But the idea is that each lot on this proposed subdivision will have a well?
Yes.
Have you... Have you post-drilling produced the well to see if you got any... What kind of flow you have?
Yeah, they're all... I've drilled 108 wells on the mountain. So, yeah, there's a lot of water in that area. There's about... With our annual snowfall, there's about 3/4 of a million gallons of water per acre.
Okay.
So they were all approved by the Wyoming State Engineers Office. And I got involved in the septic system stuff, slit trenches, and then digging the holes for perk tests for the engineer. And so that was all approved too, you know, by DEQ. So most of those lots, they're not going to have a problem putting a conventional system in because there's plenty of dirt. There are a few places that it's pretty rocky and they'll have to find a... Just a different spot to put a leach field.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Katie Lijewski. I own property...
What's your address, please?
On the mountain or in town?
I guess either one.
9550 K-2 Tower Road.
Thank you.
Which is not the address that you guys will ever find because it's screwed up. I bought the property immediately adjacent to this property.
Which side?
I would be... I'm too short, right here above me.
Kind of at the... At the end of Jackson Canyon, what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, as you come off of K-2 Road, my property is right there.
Okay.
Regarding the road, oh, I never received notification of any of this. As well as the two other property owners that I'm also speaking for because they can't be here, that I bought the property from, they did not receive any notification. They live on... They're the two next properties attached to that. Okay? We never received notification on any of this. Thank God somebody posted it for me. Okay? As far as the road and it being an easement, we have been looking for 15 years and have been told by the county that there is no easement, that it's a private road. Can we get documentation proving that there is an easement? We've been requesting that. From K-2 Tower on Jackson Canyon, which is a very confusing, because I'm on Jackson Canyon Road, but my address is K-2. It's also known as Kilmer Road. It's also known as Archery Range Road. So what is the legal address? Or the real name of that road? And is it really a county road? When we call what's-his-name at the county parks to maintain that road or plow it, he says that's not a county road, it's a private road.
So unless Legal has a rabbit in their hat, that's a question we're not going to be able to answer tonight.
I guess you could meet with the planner and see what documents she's looked at. Or she could maybe, I don't know how big they are, email them to you. Presumably, they're filed with the clerk and anyone can go dig through the clerk's records.
We have, and we can't find them.
I don't know where Ms. Chavez found them. And I'm pretty sure she's sorry she did, but...
I know, it's a conundrum on that property, I understand. So I am against that for several reasons. Because they're moving a road that has been there forever. It's fire access. Is there going to be... Have they spoke to the fire department about the access? And if we vacate that, that is a well-used road. The dog sled races until Pam Dunn passed away would take that road. That was part of their route. If we vacate that road, there's not access from Archery Range to K-2 for emergency vehicles. My other concern is with all the septic systems. My property is the start of Garden Creek. It has the well, or it has the spring that starts Garden Creek. How much of that leach field is going to go in and pollute Garden Creek? I'm downhill from that property. How much is going to come into my property? So I am against it.
Any questions? Would you repeat your last name, please?
Lijewski.
Lijewski?
Uh huh. Do you want me to spell it?
Unless somebody's just taking minutes. It wouldn't hurt.
L-I-J-E-W-S-K-I.
Thank you. So any questions for Ms. Lijewski?
I said one question. I think what I read in here, I think you went through the sheriff's department for law enforcement? For the... At least, I think I read in this packet. So are you required to look at the fire service and whatever of how that would affect taking that road? Or is that relevant to what?
So currently, the discussion of the vacation of the road is not relevant. Right now, we're discussing the subdivision itself.
Okay.
I think I... Ms. Chavez, was the... Natrona County... Or Natrona County Casper Mountain Fire Protection District notified of this subdivision? And did they have any comments?
They... Hold on a second. They were notified on August 17th of 2020, and there was no comments returned.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, for the second time, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Tracy Lamont, 9855 Crimson Dawn Road. When I caught wind of this subdivision, I was planning on speaking to come for it. But as the day went on here, I did a little digging and I've had to flip-flop on that, on it. And in the interest of trying to identify where the parcels are that Katie Lijewski was referring to, she was too short on this map. Katie, is there any chance you can come up and show us on this map where your property is? And also the two parcels that belong to Mrs. Reed?
This one, this one, and this one.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask that question is if that road is vacated, they no longer have access to their properties on it. And that's a no-no. That's the first thing that needs to be given consideration here. And I'm going to give you a real quick walkthrough here of what's happened. On it, it looks to me like there's a monopolistic squeeze play going on. But everybody's a little unhappy with the taxes increases on their properties on the mountain. And for the most part, across the board, there was a given figure of $5,850 assessed to the majority of the properties on the mountain. Some of them slipped in at $13,000, which I have since learned that... And this all ties back to where we're going here, Hal, so bear with me, okay? The $13,000 number was thrown out if your road was maintained by the county and plowed. And so there's some parcels way out on the west end, I mean, the east end of the mountain that have gotten nailed with that, that don't even have plowing pass fire marker six on it. When the rest of the properties in the core part of the mountain, which everybody enjoys the county's plowing, is rated at 5850. But the three parcels that Katie just showed you, I'm going to give you a shocker here. On it, they... I belong to a trustee that controls that by the name of Elizabeth Nelson. So you can go to the tax records and look all this stuff up. This is where I found it on Property Search. But Katie's and Larry's property is 5.6 acres. When they got their tax assessment, it was at $35,500. That's far over. That's per acre, per acre on their 5.06. That's far over the $13,000 average and the 5850 average, way over. On the other two parcels that belong to the Reeds, which they're under the name of Elizabeth Nelson. She's the trustee for the Reeds. On it, one of them's 5.7 acres at $32,251. The other one's 5.3 acres at $33,977. Those are the highest three property values that Matt Keating assessed, or the assessor's office did, across the entire mountain. Everything else either falls in the $13,000 or the 5850, it's up the mountain. So when you go in to vacate this road, you're taking the only illegal access away from all three of these people. And let me get up and show you where Jackson Canyon Road is.
As far as I can tell, this ties back over to here. You can't see it in the trees, but it's paralleling the...
You can't see it in the trees, but it's paralleling the proposed Road, T-34 Road, or whatever they've named that in their development on them. So what I'm going to propose here, in the fairness to everyone, I, I'm guessing charming that it's a public road, not a county road. On it, and, you know, in reading your notes here, Trish says, "Planning staff regarding road right-ofways and deeds to K-2 Road. Staff did locate several documents that are currently being reviewed by different county departments." So I am privy and do have knowledge that there are copies of an old road easement that's in possession of the planning department on them. So I'd like a copy of that, if I could, please. And I'd like to provide that to, also request a copy of that for the Lijewskis too, as well. Because I believe that's already an easement of the road for public purposes. It was also known as the West End Road. So my, my pitch here is win-win-win for everybody. I think the person that's developing the property needs to go back to the drawing board and realign the Jackson Canyon Road to follow the property lines down 34 Road and to keep it a public road, but squirt it on out to Archery Range Road. And that was a groomed snowmobile trail at one time, until I think one of the neighbors said, "Wait a minute, it's a private road," and they shut it down without the knowledge of it being a public road at present. So I'm adamantly against any abandonment of a public road. A realignment I can live with. On it, I think that's a win-win-win for everyone. So what I'm going to encourage you guys to do is vote no tonight, or table it and send it back to Heather and have Heather work with the landowner. I don't want to get crosswise with anybody, everybody's good folks here. But it needs to be done and done right. And I think there is, I didn't point out, as far as the snowmobile trail, just for you guys' informational purposes, I'll show that. But I think there's maybe a concern from the fire department, too. Any roads that you shut down or turn into cul-de-sac and, you know, knock out a drive-through is, makes it not much more of a safety hazard than a wildfire. But let me show you where the snowmobile trail runs, if I'm not mistaken. I'm thinking it runs this trail, and then it hooks back up on what they call the Kirkland Prime Road. And that's been established, I've worked with the, with the landowners way back. That was when Kilmer owned the property and why it was called Kilmer Road at one point in time. So let me run through my notes here and make sure I got everything. And Hal, I wanted to commend you, that was a great question on the water, and then also on the, on the road issue, so. Kilmer Road was what it was also called. And I'm asking the Lijewskis again, on it, is, is this road the only legal access that you, I mean, the only access you have to your properties?
Yes.
Okay, that's important. That's the most important thing here we've heard tonight. We don't want to shut anybody out. So I would imagine where I'm going with this, the property value's got way high on three lots. So we got a little squeeze play going on here as far as what it looks like. It smacks of collusion. And that's not a good deal. Not a good deal at all. These people need to be taken care of first. They should be on the right-ofway, and I would do well on, enlighten you on, there was a meeting held at the old Trail's Lodge, where they invite, the developer, one of the people that was the developer, invited everybody, but the Lijewskis never got an invitation.
So, Trish, I appreciate the, you're bringing some good points up here. As far as conspiracy theories and collusion and all that, let's leave that away.
I, I will, but I just wanted to point that out on these trees, so I appreciate that. So then, I'll close with, with, hang on here just one second. With them being taken care of in the easements, Jackson's Canyon Road. I think I've got it.
Tracy, we're running short on time here, so hopefully you're better.
Okay, I appreciate it. You're a good referee, Hal, you always have been. Um, so that's it.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Lamont? Thank you, Tracy. Okay, again, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward and let us hear you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Tyler Eickholdt, and I am Assistant Chief of Casper Mountain Fire Department, Station 14, 1,000 Lammers Road. I am neither in favor nor opposed to this application. This was brought to my attention by many concerned residents today. My chief and I have concerns about accessibility for fire apparatus if Kilmer Road, or what you are referring to tonight as Jackson Canyon Road, is no longer public access. For example, my fire department uses this road to have quick response time from Station 14 to Archery Range Road. My fire department uses this road to run back and forth to fill trucks during fires in Archery Range area. We use this road to go from Archery Range Road to the Aspen subdivision. Without the public access or fire department access, we will have a longer response time. Our main priority is to keep our resident, or, I'm sorry. Our main priority is to keep our response time to areas on the mountain as short as possible to ensure the safety of our residents and their property. In regards of the private road from the applicant, will it be in compliant for fire apparatuses? And also, I served as a safety officer for the 2020 season. I am not aware of any contact in August of 2020.
Is that it? Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for, is it Eickholdt?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Eickholdt?
It's E-I-C-K-H-O-L-T. You're welcome.
It's more of a question for Trish that may answer your question, but the proposed private road, I see the width here. It's a 50-foot wide road, and it looks like they've got a 50-foot radius at the, at the end, kind of a cul-de-sac to, to turn around. Would you think that would be inadequate fire apparatus road?
Yes, I believe so. There are certain requirements that we like to see, especially turnarounds, because we do have two structured engines, just like the city does, that there are many roads on the mountain that we have issues getting our larger trucks in for structure protection.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you. All we have, I guess, thank you. Anyone else, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane, Casper Mountain. I think all of my points repeat, so I'll make this pretty quick. But even though I live on the east side of the mountain, what stuck out about this to me was the question about public safety being considered. And there are two ways that fire access, I think, is impeded. And Assistant Chief just did a great job speaking to one of them. The other is actually getting out in the case that there is a fire. And we know, lessons from the Sheep Herder Hill Fire, roads that the fire department thought were maintained were not. And subsequent to that fire, big efforts had been made to make sure that each parcel has two egresses. I didn't see anything in my review of the staff report that shows that what we've been asked to do on the east side is being asked of this subdivision. The other lesson from the east end is when you subdivide and approve, but the easement is not approved, my family's cabin went through this situation with East End Road, where the road is where the road has been for a long time, but the easement actually wasn't. So it wound up costing us and the county a lot of time and money to get that fixed. And it was maybe eight or 10 years after the cabin started going up that we actually signed off that the road is where the road is and doesn't go through our cabin. So we went through building permit process. I mean, there were a lot of eyes on it that let us put a cabin where the road easement should have been. Just underlining the importance, minutes make a difference when there's a fire. Sheep Herder Hill Fire, you know, didn't really care about any of this. So I think there's been fantastic conversation about this. But I just wanted to elevate that when we talk about an egress to get out, that you could be pinned down in this location, and not having this road across could be a big issue. And so the picture I kind of wanted to paint, which I don't think came up, is, is imagine the subdivision is approved. Imagine that the road is vacated, but nothing gets built, and the road falls into disrepair. People are going to be trapped, fire department's not going to be able to respond, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schneider? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, declare a, into the public hearing portion of the, of the application. So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, feels like we've, we've had a lot of conversation this evening in regards to vacating a road. And, and I think tonight, the, the goal is to consider a subdivision. And we talked about this Jackson Canyon Road being on here, and it's not shown on the plat that's in front of us. But the applicant is, is willing to put that on there. And, and this conversation about vacating the road then could happen at some later point. I think if Jackson Canyon Road is on there, we've provided multiple fire egresses that could access it via Archery Range Road or K-2 Road. You know, I can appreciate Mr. Lamont's conversation about it could be a win-win, that from what I've just sketched on, on my little map here, it looks like it crosses about three lots. They could very much use his proposed road and then go down the property line of Lot 3 and get back over to Archery Range and, and maintain, realign, if you will, Jackson Canyon Road. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, with that, I would, I would move approval of this subdivision contingent on the following conditions. One, Jackson Canyon Road, as we've discussed it tonight, is shown on the plat. Two, the wells that have been successfully drilled, let's go ahead and show those on the plat. We know those to be true now. Three, a note on the sanitary sewer, that PE'd, engineered design may be required per the DEQ letter that was, that was in here. In, in my opinion, that seems to address a lot of the concerns that are, that are stayed forward. And if they do move forward the vacation process, everyone will have to stay involved and, and bring their, their concerns during that, that vacation.
Anything about the HOA versus the ISB?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would also add that contingency that we need to have, we need to, those HOA agreement papers that are going to show how that road is going to be maintained, need to be put together. And quite honestly, I feel like this stuff needs to be put together before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners, so that the county commissioners have those tools in their hand when they go to consider it.
I'll second that motion. And I just, I guess, make the motion, or I guess this is the discussion question, I guess, is yeah, because I don't think, because I agree with you, I don't think we want the fire department going to the commissioners' meeting and telling them that they don't think that this is safe for the community. That'll just kick it back.
If you want to second it, then we can have discussion.
Yeah, second, though, I guess that this is the discussion. So second, but then there'd be discussion. Because I, what I look at is, is trying to get whatever, you know, whether it's that road, is making sure that, that the, that the county fire department that's up there kind of can access those communities in a, in a safe manner. Because that's what I was hearing. Because I kind of agree with, with Commissioner Gutierrez, that if you put that road on the map, and that leaves the mo, the road intact, the septic system, if, assuming it's approved by the DEQ, that takes care of that. And then the third issue is just, what the fire chief was talking about is being able to turn the, turn the trucks around and making sure there's access. If all those questions can be answered, I think preferably before the next commissioners' meeting, so that all those issues are resolved, you know, and that, to me, that, that seems to be, you know, the issues with them.
So I've got a couple of discussion, discussion things on my own list. Number one, I guess that was a letter lost to county fire from last June.
Possibly.
Maybe they didn't get it, or lost to the mail or something. I think that's important. I mean, we heard today that, you know, concerns. Secondly, I am concerned with Mr. Lamont's statement that at least one of those properties, and maybe all three, would be cut off from public access by this subdivision. And even if they're not cut off from public access, this shows as a private road. So where those property owners now enjoy access to a private or to a public road, they're going to be put in a position where they're going to have to go to this property owner and most likely pay for access that today they get for free. So I don't, I don't know, have you, has staff looked at that? Are, are indeed those properties going to be cut off if this section of Jackson Canyon Road through the subdivision is abandoned?
Steph has, has not looked into that as of right now. I mean, there's been a little bit of a, a discussion about it, but, you know, we're discussing the subdivision and not the vacation, so I, I don't have all the answers to the vacation questions yet.
So I'm picturing going to the county commissioners and then having those property owners say, "What about us? You're cutting off our access, and we're going to have to go pay whoever's developing this to get access to our property." I would be, I would be concerned about that.
And that's, that's part of the whole public hearing process for vacations of a road, is to hear both sides of, of that discussion.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if this proposed road that is shown here is private, if that is turned into, if, rather than it being private, if it is public, would that address your concern?
Yes, it would, but I'm not so sure that the, I mean, we have Ms. Duncan Malone here, maybe she could address that. But I suspect that's a pretty important part of the plat, is they don't want people running up and down the road. But you're welcome to, Ms. Duncan Malone, would you come up and address that, please?
And, and the road you're talking about is the one that they're going to put in?
Talking about this.
Yeah, that one, that they're going to build, okay.
If it was public or whatever, public access.
Well, I, I do believe it is important to him that it is a, a private easement. I, I would like to address some of the things that have been discussed, if I, if I may.
Absolutely.
I, you know, if, if there's, and it's by no means a foregone conclusion that a vacation would take place. It's a, a separate process that requires, you know, a lot of time and, and notice. If it did, it would just be within his subdivision, so I don't believe that it should affect the landowners in the Reed subdivision. I think their access comes from K-2 Road rather than the Jackson Canyon Road. So I don't believe that that would affect their access to their lots, to their property up there.
Maybe, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and, and that's part of the process of the vacation, is to determine whose rights might be impaired.
Okay.
I, I do know, Mr. Lemon and I did discuss, you know, fire access, and he, of course, would be, have no problem granting access to the fire department, an easement or whatever would be necessary, or to the county for any purpose that was needed. Whether it's through Jackson County Road or, or along the, the private roadway. So I know that he's not opposed to that.
So you guys bear with me here a little bit. So the Natrona County Fire, Fire District here is here. is here. You know, they seem to have concern. Maybe, maybe you guys just found out about this, or you'd like the time to process what's going on here so that you can give a definitive answer to whether you think it's a good idea to have the subdivision? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Basically, one direction, we're the Casper Mountain Fire Protection District.
Casper Mountain, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And how long does something like that take?
You know, my chief and myself were just notified of this issue today around noon time, so we haven't had much time to do, get together to discuss this at all.
So my concern is, are we going to have time to jump through all these hoops and have it ready to go to the county commissioners by April 6, or should it be pushed?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note also that the road requirements meet the subdivision regulations for the subdivision on the mountain. We have specific guidelines for mountain roads, and the road that's proposed meets those guidelines.
Okay.
Just wanted to add that.
Any other questions for Ms. Duncan Malone? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on, we have a motion on the table for approval?
One more discussion question. So, if that road is put on the plat, then that's technically a public road, unless it goes through a vacation. Is that what I understand? Because you put, because right now, because they're saying their sole access is through that, through that road. So if I put it on the plat, does that maintain, my understanding is that would maintain that access as a public road? I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand this because, because I do think it's relevant that if they lose, if they lose access to the property, if that's a private road over there and they can't get through it there, and then that Jackson County Road is now considered, you know, not a public road, then they don't have access. So, to me, and to me, though, and I think that was part of your motion, is that to make sure that they still have access through that Jackson County Road. Because I do think that that's a relevant issue if they, if they can't access their property. And it almost seems like they've been grandfathered in because they're almost like a common law easement, that they've been allowed access through that property. And I, you know, and I'm not an attorney, but to me, that, to me, that, that's a common law easement. If people have used it for access to that property, then I think there's a legal, there is a legal process you have to go through to take that access away. I'm just trying to get these questions answered before it goes up to the commissioner, so that all this is kind of sorted out.
Right, right. So, Mr. Chair, by putting it on the plat, it puts anyone who wants to look at it on notice that there's something there. It is just preserving whatever easement is already there. It's not, it's not changing anything. It's just saying, hey, anybody who looks at this...
It just means that they still have access. If it's on the plat, and if they've been using it, then they can continue to use it to access their property.
The plat's just showing that there's an easement. It would be a different legal process if the parties wanted to fight about what that easement entailed. And that could be civil between different property owners. If it's a county road, it could involve the county. And what we're hearing is that it is a county road, and the process for them to get rid of it would be to vacate the road, and then there'd be the amended plat because nobody would need to know that there was an easement there.
Excuse me.
It seemed like you had another question, didn't it?
No, that was just mine. Is that, to me, what the fire department concerned, I think, is something that, that maybe they can, maybe they can address by the commissioners' meeting. But then the other thing, too, is making sure that whoever's on the east side of that property still has access. And if we put it on the, I guess, if it's put on the plat, then that maintains a common law easement through there.
It doesn't. It just puts people on notice something's there. And what exactly it is, if people start fighting about it, that's when somebody'd file a lawsuit, and the judge would figure it out. So, for this, it's just saying, there's an easement of some sort there, and putting people on notice.
So another question. So we're talking about two separate things here that are really altogether, the vacation and the plat. So are we on, are we thinking right to go ahead and potentially go ahead with the subdivision when we've got all this stuff going on about access and, I mean, is that, is that normal?
Well, I don't want to, I mean, I haven't seen anything like that here. I don't know if it's normal. But what the motion is, is reasonable because the property is being subdivided. That's what's happening right now. And that's why it was an important point, that whether the road is vacated or not vacated, the subdivision requirements are still met. And so they have a subdivision with some road running through lots. That's what they have if the road's not vacated.
Okay, all right. Okay. So, a question for you, Jason. Was among your stipulations for your motion, was it to have the Casper Mountain Fire District provide approval for, or provide input on the issue of vacating Jackson Canyon Road?
It was not on my list, but I would take that as a friendly amendment, that Casper Mountain Fire would provide a comment before the BOCC providing comments for this. And again, I don't think we're vacating anything here.
I don't think we can.
We're just, and Charmaine to spin off on kind of what you said, if we show that on here, we've preserved whatever might have been in place before this subdivision.
Yes.
And by not putting it on there, may be a different, different answer. But at least if we put it on there, we've preserved whatever was there for a future discussion.
And put people on notice.
Can you restate your amendment? Are we ready to do that? Because we've gone through so many iterations of this. Just so I know what, know what we're, because I seconded it, and then I kind of liked it, but now I kind of don't know what it was.
All right. So I would move approval, as near as I can recite it here without going back and listening to the recording, I would move approval of the proposed subdivision with the following amendments.
Okay.
One, Jackson Canyon Road, as we've discussed it tonight, would be shown on the plat. Two, let's indicate what, where the location of the known wells are that have been drilled. Three, put on the plat that lot owners may be required to have a PE'd septic system. The HOA conversation, we want to see the homeowners' documents prepared for the commissioners to look at it for, specifically, it's the maintenance of the road. How are they setting up the maintenance of the internal roads for evaluation? And then, I guess, lastly, what I took as a friendly amendment from Chairman Hutchinson was have Casper Mountain Fire Protection District be able to review this prior to the BOCC meeting. Did I miss any?
That's good.
So I have a question. HOA versus ISD, Homeowners Association versus Improvement Service District. Our rules and regulations specify Improvement Service District shall be, I don't believe it has any provision for an HOA that I recall. Are we stepping off in something that's weird?
Mr. Chairman, there has been the requirement for an Improvement Service District that was added in the last, it's been a couple of years. We have required applicants to form an Improvement Service District because it says "shall." And what we found out is that has not met the intent of what we put it in there to do. We require the Improvement Service District, the developer complies, they go through the long, expensive process to go through the state to create one, and in the meantime, they have to form like an LLC or some other entity, because you have to have at least three members in it. And so ultimately, it ends up failing. They create it, and then the county has, gets stuck dealing with the state for a non-compliant Improvement Service District. So there is currently a text amendment that I'm working on to remove the requirement for an Improvement Service District. So in this case, when we worked with the landowner about forming an HOA for road maintenance, because that's a really big issue that he wants to do, we moved away from the Improvement Service District because they're just not beneficial, and they don't work 90% of the time.
So my concern is, giving at least tacit approval to HOA that we don't really deal with, throws this into the deal of whoever buys a lot out there is, in essence, taking a gamble that their next-door neighbor's going to pay for their assessment every year, whereas the ISD has a lot more teeth than an HOA, in my way of thinking, has. I mean, the assessments put on the tax roll, there's liens, the whole bit, where I don't, I have never heard of the Naterona County being in the business of promoting HOAs. And we had the applicant here saying that they wouldn't have a problem with the Improvement Service District, as I understood.
Okay.
So I throw that in as one of the comments on your list of amendments as a consideration.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Malone spoke to, they were willing to do either, either/or. I hear your point that right now, the rules say ISD. They don't say HOA, they say ISD, even though maybe they're flawed and need to be readdressed. We could require an ISD, and ultimately, the BOCC would have the ability to modify that to an HOA if they were comfortable with that, that decision.
To me, that sounds reasonable.
So I guess I would modify that from HOA to ISD.
Any other discussion? All in favor of PS 20-1, that is, final plat of seven acres to be known as Mountain Acre Subdivision, subject to the amendments provided, I believe there were five of them, signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed? It passes. Thank you all. All right. Next on the agenda is update on the zoning resolution rewrite.
Mr. Chairman, I added that agenda item so that Jason could give you an update on the latest.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mitchell, we had a, first, we had a steering committee meeting with the consultants and went through kind of a laundry list of issues that are, we have dealt with, with the zoning resolution over the years. Everything from what is a campground, what do we do with tiny homes, there was a number of conversations, what items are considered conditional use and what items aren't. There was myself, Todd Kittle, who's a local landowner, rancher slash realtor, and Jerry Cook, who is another business owner, landowner. And we kind of went, we went around the table, and there was also Leah Smith with the Health Department was there, and we talked about concerns we all had individually with the zoning resolution. Later that night, there was an open house at the ALRC Learning Center. Chairman Hutchinson, I did see him come through. There was a series of maps and sticky notes where they asked for the public to provide feedback. It was well-attended. There was quite a few folks going through there. Trish probably has the exact numbers from the sign-in sheets, but they visited. There was two county commissioners there, Commissioner Hendry and Commissioner Milm, and we went through various things. I was personally surprised to see more conditional uses when we started talking about like a, I don't believe it was a hunting ranch, it said something about essentially recreational uses as it gets into a residence or a ag land type use, and that, at least when I looked at it, there was a lot of sticky notes on that that was more of a conditional use. They had note boards where folks could write down. There was a general sediment to make it simpler, I think, than what it is. And Trish, chime in if I've missed any, any takeaways from that. But they've had that open house. My understanding is, they've met with some focus groups, including the Mountain Focus Group. They went through apparently some things with that group. What focus groups have you met with?
So we've done the steering committee, we've done the stakeholders, we had actually a great in-depth conversation with the Mountain, some of the Mountain landowners. We've got a couple more that we're looking at getting scheduled in the future. We had over 200 people actually sign in, which of course, we know that there's a lot of people who don't sign in, so the turnout was fantastic. And it was, it was really great to see. So we have some more public meetings coming up. They're not 100% scheduled yet, but we're looking at least two more between April and June. And so that's it so far. So I'm getting ready to do an email blast to everybody that was in attendance, that gave the emails, just kind of an update, and just to check back on future meetings and that website, so.
So just a refresher, we're expecting a two-year process, and we're a couple of months down the road, right?
We're looking at about 18 months right now, yeah.
Okay. Just getting out of the, just getting out of the driveway.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that. So is there any other, what do we have? Public comment. Is there anyone wishing to come forward and visit with us?
I'll keep this short, Hal. I can't do that. I'm confused here because, you know, my dad's business partner was Paul Manley, and him and Tom Bechtel and the Hazelton family started Starwell Developments. And every subdivision I've ran across up there from the Hat Six to whatever else, all the roads get dedicated to the public. I think we missed that here. That precedent has already been set. You can't have just a private subdivision where you run into problems, and they'll throw up a gate right away. So there's an obstruction for the fire department. But then if somebody has a guest that wants to come up that doesn't have a key to the gate, they're shut out. So that's the reason that's done. And I, I just want to throw that out there, even though the motion is moved, but that'll be the argument. And you were headed there. You did a good job, Matt. I'm impressed. You're a good addition to the board here on himself. What happened to everybody else? They retire, they get old? Bailey and Wright?
They moved on to the...
Greener Caster.
Happy planting in the sky or something.
That's, that's the only thing I had. You know, it's good to keep Jackson Canyon Road on there, but if it gets vacated, these people are hosed. That's the bottom line. So those three lots need to be taken care of in that discussion. So if you have any further chitchat amongst you, you need to get these people taken care of. Otherwise, they're shut out when you look at that map up there.
Sounds like there's a lot of discussion, separate from the sub, well, there's a lot of discussion on that vacation yet to be had.
Exactly. And, you know, if, even if they open that up to public road and don't punch it all the way through, you know, that still takes care of everybody. But I, I just don't hope like hell it's a land grab here. I'll just leave it at that, okay. Thanks for the time again.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks. I neglected to say earlier, and it wasn't really applicable to the, to the process, but I'm concerned that, about the public notices and the timing, and I understand that you're going to put this road on the plat now and require that going forward, but I'm, I was surprised to see you accept it without resetting the clock and going back to the beginning of the process to say, "This is coming before the commission, now the plat is actually, has the road in it that it's supposed to," and go through that. And I also thought that without having those, without knowing that those 27 folks who were notified actually got that mail, it seems like going back and notifying again would have been prudent, just to make sure that you had all of the comment that you could, not just what happened between noon and, and tonight with it going on Facebook. So, that, that was interesting to me, and, and I just wanted to, as, I guess, the convener of the Mountain Group, we were asked to limit our participation to six folks, and there wound up being three folks who could participate in that session. We did turn down several other people who were interested in joining that stakeholder meeting because of that cap at six.
Time out. Are, are you talking about the zoning resolution?
Yes.
Is that what?
Yeah, I, I moved topics on to the zoning resolution.
Okay, okay.
So I just wanted to share my opinion, even though I'm incredibly appreciative that the consultants and Trish were, made themselves available to speak with us about it as a part of their process, I, I don't want to give the impression that there was a substantial Mountain resident voice in that meeting, because it was really, it was Tracy, Tracy's brother and myself, so, and, and best of intentions was to get six people there and to have a more robust conversation, but that's what we're calling, I guess, the Mountain Community Stakeholder Group.
I can appreciate that would be a challenge, getting six people or three people to represent. I heard at one time there were 800 properties or people or something up on that mountain, it was a big number.
Yeah.
So, I can appreciate that as a, that's a big challenge to get someone that can speak for that many people.
And, and I don't think we, we touched, scratched the surface on that really, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. So Trish, I do have to question, and we go through this all the time as far as public notice, and you have GIS, and GIS spits out who the property owners are within a certain radius and send them a letter, and I guess if you have absent, if you send a letter to, I mean, I don't know how that works. If someone doesn't live up there, but they live in town and they get a, the letter sent up to the mountain, how does it work?
So, Mr. Chairman, all of the letters get sent out by data that's collected and held at the assessor's office. I don't have personal addresses to everybody, so the parcel data comes from the assessor's office, so if S, the assessor's office doesn't have accurate addresses or ownership information, that's part of the issue that we run into. I would like to note that state statute only requires us to notify adjacent landowners, so when we, we go above and beyond, depending on the density, we like to increase it, you know, whether it's a quarter mile, in some instances where we're further out of town and the parcels are bigger, we'll do five or eight miles. So it, it just depends, but, you know, just keeping in mind that we're only required to notify adjacent, and then just keeping up that property ownership and, and stuff with the assessor's office, keeping it current is, is really key.
I was wondering if by chance the Naterona County Fire District might have been notified and not the Casper Mountain Fire District as a reason for that schnafu we, that...
That could possibly be, I would have to, to double check.
Okay. So just trying to follow up on a couple of your questions there. And then also, are, does staff go out and, do they post, like the city does, do they post for planning and zoning, or they actually drive a stake in the ground? They don't do that in the county?
We, we used to, the signs that we were posting were roughly between like $400 and we would go out there, post them, they'd get stolen, and, and we never recoup that money, so we stopped the notification process on properties and just do the legal notice. One of the, the newest additions is we have redone our Naterona County website. As part of that, I had legal notices tab added to our planning department's website. So any of our upcoming meetings, from the minute that I send them to the Casper Star Tribune, they are posted on the county's website under the planning department. So, that's, that's another way, you know, I know there's a lot of people that are now not getting the Casper Star, checking it, and so that's, that's one of the additions that we've recently done, is, is added a legal notice section.
So that kind of puts an onus on the property owner though to
Check the website.
To check the Naterona County website every month, and who does that?
Well, you know, and it's just one other way, it's not required, but it was something that we added to try and help reach the public and give them other options to finding things that are happening.
Unfortunately, that's something that Wyoming State Legislature's going to have to take up, not, not so much Naterona County. All right, anything else for the good of the order here tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would add, you know, there was a lengthy list of amendments I had, and, and at least my own personal comment on it is, when an applicant has professional help, whether that be an attorney or a consulting engineering firm, I always feel more comfortable that they're able to get those items put together in the give or take three weeks before the BOCC meeting, and so I always have a little higher level of confidence that when they have a professional, they can get it done. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, entertain a motion for adjourn, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?